Good evening, Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Young?
Would you please join me in a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, April 4th, 2013. Time flies. I did want to announce that our Rutherford County Health Department is sponsoring a Mayor's Walk the next, I believe it's the next six weekends and kicking off this weekend at Oakland's Park at the foot of the north end of Manny Avenue. At 8:00 a.m., the Mayor's Walk to try to get some exercise, to improve health and promote healthy lifestyle. I want to hand a thanks to the Rutherford County Health Department and all of our mayors. Encourage people to come out and walk with us at 8:00 a.m. at Oakland's Park on this Saturday and then each Saturday following, there'll be one at either 8:00 or 11:00 in the neighborhoods in Murfreesboro. So we look forward to having those Mayor's Walks for a healthy lifestyle. That's all sponsored by the Rutherford County Health Department. So I look forward to seeing each of you this weekend, Saturday morning at 8:00. Let's go walk. Looks like the weather's going to be good. It was a good thing it wasn't today because it would have been a wet ducky walk that we would have been having. Not a good day for anybody but ducks. So, council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda, are there any questions regarding any of the items on our consent agenda?
No, Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. A motion and a second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time you also have the minutes of a special meeting we had on March 21st and the regular meeting March 21st. Have any questions, additions, deletions to those minutes as they're presented?
I'll move we accept them as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman.
Second.
And a second. Thank you very much. Ms. Harris, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance to annex an area adjacent to Sinking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance to adopt the Greenways, Blueways, and Bike Ways Master Plan.
Mayor?
Mr. Young?
I would ask the council to defer this until we have the other two members here, if this is possible.
Is that possible, Ms. McGinnan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young's made a second, I mean a first. Is there a second?
I'll second his motion. Out of respect for the two who are not here with us tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli, a motion and second to defer. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. That is deferred. This time we'll consider for renewal a certificate of compliance for Timothy Miles and Brandy Miles at Chill Wines and Spirits, 2445 Memorial Boulevard, Suite D. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is something the state requires every two years in order for a location to have their liquor package store license renewed and the owners of this location have met our requirement, so I recommend approval.
All right, you have this certificate of renewal for a certificate of compliance. Is there a motion that we reissue?
Move that we reissue.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman.
Second.
And a Young. Mr. Young, seconds. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have your renewal. At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on February 28th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider annexation for approximately 3.6 acres located along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane. Anthony Togrey is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 17th, 2013 edition of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Our first public hearing that the Planning Commission is bringing to you this evening is to consider annexing property located along the western side of Highway 231 known as Memorial Boulevard. This property consists of two parcels for a total of 3.71 acres and is identified as the orange shaded parcels on the map that you have on your iPads and that it's available on the screen. This study area is contiguous with current city limits along the northern portion of the second parcel to the rear and along to the western and southern sides. It is currently within Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. When the Planning Commission initially studied this area, they considered three parcels for annexation. That included the white parcel that is rectangular shaped and located just north of the study area between existing city limits. At that public hearing, we heard from the property owner of that northern parcel and the property owner's daughter their desire to not be included in the annexation at this time, so the Planning Commission's recommendation to you is not to annex that initial 6.28 acres which was studied, but to annex 3.71 acres shaded in the orange area. The plan of services that you have in your packages has been amended to include that change, so it's only for the annexation of the two parcels which have requested annexation and are owned by Dr. Togrey. The properties are located just north of the public shopping center and just east of the Paddock Club Apartments, and you can see that from the map as well. Across Memorial Boulevard is the VA Hospital. There's companion zoning change requests which will be the subject of the next public hearing. However, this public hearing should be to consider annexing these two parcels and adopting the plan of services which have been prepared for these properties. The properties currently are receiving city services or can receive all city service upon annexation becoming effective, so we don't expect any complicated matters in this study. Seven Planning Commission members were present the evening of this public hearing and have all unanimously recommended that these properties be annexed. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at any point. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision regarding this matter.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ely. Any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this annexation request? Anything at all before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation request, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to annex an area located along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on February 28th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 3.2 acres located along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane to Highway Commercial, CH District, simultaneous with annexation. Anthony Togrey is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 17th, 2013 edition of a local newspaper. Proceed, Ms. Ely.
Thank you again, Mayor. Our second public hearing this evening is to consider changing the zone of the two properties which you just considered annexation for. Under the zoning ordinance, these properties would ordinarily be, come into the city with an interim zoning of RS-15 because they are zoned R-15 in Rutherford County. However, the property owner, Dr. Togrey, has requested that the zoning for these properties be changed when it is annexed and that have requested a zoning of CH. That CH zoning would allow commercial type uses, of course, along this highway. The property is located along Memorial Boulevard or Highway 231, located north of property zone CH, which are the public shopping centers and some out parcels, some of which are currently undeveloped and then some which are developed as a gas station. And it's located, the properties that are located to the west of the study area is zoned RM-16 and is developed multifamily, this multifamily apartment community as Paddock Club. Just to the north is property which is not being annexed at this time and just north of that property is our property zone CH, Commercial Highway District. The applicant has requested that you can, you change this zoning to CH simultaneous with its annexation. And CH zoning is something we typically see along a commercial highway corridor and this is located along a highway. There's seven members of the Planning Commission present for the public hearing have, did recommend that this property be zoned CH simultaneous with its annexation. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision about the zoning of this property.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Any questions of Ms. Ely regarding this zoning request? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning of 3.2 acres located along Memorial Boulevard, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to zone an area located along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane to Highway Commercial, CH District, simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on February 28th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider amending approximately 18 acres of the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Swan Home Drive, consisting of parcel L of the Victory Station, PUD. Gross Builders is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 17th, 2013 edition of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, what a surprise to see you again.
It's good to be seen, thank you.
Yes.
This third and final public hearing which we're bringing to you from the Planning Commission is to consider amending a PUD zone for a property that's approximately 18 acres. This property is identified as parcel L in the Victory Station planned development. That planned development was initially approved in 2000, so about 13 years ago. At that time, multifamily was identified for this use. The planned development was amended in 2007 and a plan was presented called the Madison and Victory Station, and that was for a more specific multifamily development plan. Due to the current or the previous economic recession which we all endured, this property did not develop and now a different owner is, has a contract to buy this property and has a different vision for the property although it is for it to remain multifamily. The current plan allows a 288-unit multifamily complex. The primary change of this PUD amendment is to increase the density from 288 dwelling units to 312 units, and so that is an increase of 24 units over the previously approved plan. The plan does include some density bonuses which we would ordinarily review when we review multifamily developments. Those are formal open spaces, recreation areas that the tenants could use. There was a neighborhood meeting for this project at Scales Elementary on February 4th. This item came up for public hearing on February 6th. At that meeting, the Planning Commission did defer action and they deferred action for, to give the staff an opportunity to do some more research, come back with them, to them with some information and then to make the final decision. I did have the program book couriered to you, so you should have it not only on your iPads, but a paper copy available to you. And if you do decide to amend this PUD as requested, this will become the official zoning for the property. There was quite a bit of conversation about the current plan that is approved of the property's connection, roadway connection of Roxburg Court to the south. We heard from some residents who were not in favor of that and wanted the plan to change so that it no longer had that connection. Staff did study the matter and at, on the February 20th meeting invited members of the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department, the Transportation Department, Solid Waste Department, and there was a fourth department who showed up and...
Police.
The Police Department, yes, thank you, all to come and give their personal testimony and how the connection, how having that connection would affect their service delivery and it was something that each department felt was essential to the plan. So the plan does include that connection to Roxburg Court. At that February 20th meeting, five members of the Planning Commission were present and all five did recommend that the plan be approved as submitted, so as shown in the program book that you have. If you have any questions about this, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but a representative of the applicant, Mr. Randy Caldwell, is here this evening and he, okay, well, his friend, Mr. Brick Murphy, will actually do the presentation.
All right.
And our friend, I guess.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before Mr. Murphy steps up? If not, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, so he's going to, I guess we'll have a presentation from both members of your team.
Mayor Bragg, members of the City Council and staff, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Murphy, and I represent the applicant's Gross Builders. They're, before you tonight, requesting an amendment to their, the PUD plan for Victory Station. This amendment increases the density of the project from 288 units to 312 units. During the neighborhood meeting for this project and the first Planning Commission meeting, the neighbors expressed some concern about the connectivity of one of the roads through the project. My clients, however, feel very strongly about the connectivity of this road. The neighbors in Scottish Glen were concerned about it, but they feel like it's an essential part of the development plan for this project and they feel like it's very important for the serviceability for the back of Scottish Glen for fire trucks and emergency vehicles. Additionally, back in 2000, when this project initially came before you for approval of the Victory Station PUD plan, the connectivity of this road was approved at that time, and I represented the applicants in 2007 on the Madison Project, which also had connectivity for this public road as well. Just to be brief, over the past 13 years, the connectivity of this road has been called for. My clients feel very strongly about the connectivity of this road and I believe the city staff and the heads of the city departments feel very strongly about this as well. Mr. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith is going to walk y'all through the specifics of the plan and will be here to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Tony Stevenson with Gross Builders is also present tonight, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brick. And I'll try to make this brief because Margaret Ann's done an excellent job of explaining everything, but I have some visuals here that'll help to reflect what we were talking about. Again, this image just shows the relationship of the PUD, of the site as it relates to the Victory Station planned unit development. You can see the crosshatched area there that basically indicates the entirety of the PUD there. The site is, oh, just 18 acres. You can see how it's configured there. It's pretty much an open field. You'll see Scottish Glen to the south. You'll see the Roxburg Court where it terminates there on the, on the east end, which is the road in question relative to the extension that came up in the, in the public hearings and the, and the neighborhood meetings. This reflects the plan that came before this body and the Planning Commission back in 2008 with the original Madison and Victory Station development. There was some, the other development that came into the west that revised the PUD entirety, but at that time, the back half of this was already planned for multifamily. It was basically a reconfiguration based on this new developer coming into play and the relocation of Roxburg Court. But that extension, as you can see, was shown at that time as, as part of the master plan. Basically, again, Gross Builders came to us, asked us to relook at the layout of this based on, on their product. Because of some greater efficiency in their building design, we were able to accomplish 24 more units on the site, which is basically another building, but we made sure we maintained the integrity of the original development with keeping the buildings up on the street, which is Swan Home Drive to the north. But also what we did, we took some opportunities and proved how the development related to the Scottish Glen community. We turned some buildings on their end. We took away the loop drive that was on that southern edge. If you can see on the southwest side, we were able to increase the open space along there to create greater separation between the parking and the community. So even though we're adding units here, we feel that we've made a much better improvement to the plan as how, as it relates and how it will impact Scottish Glen. And again, you'll see the, the Roxburg Court going through there. And again, this is just to see them side by side. You can see where, how we basically turned the long side of the buildings to end just to, again, reemphasize how we have improved the plan from, for the folks to the south. Again, Margaret Ann touched on the density bonus. Again, we looked at this from an RM-16 standpoint with all the amenities that we're providing. We fit within that zoning classification, which is, which is usually what the staff ask us to look, look at as far as how we start out and look at what units are appropriate for, for an RM-16 classification of this nature, even though this isn't a planned unit development. Architecturally, again, this is just the images reflecting what will be built out there. This is all masonry. They, we did go through some efforts when we went through the Planning Commission as far as making sure that we adhered to this being all masonry and going to the hardy plank and basically changing up the colors on here. We do have vinyl in the internal breezeway. Is that something we talked to the staff, but that's the only place that we have that. The rest of it will be all masonry with a hardy plank and cultured stone and brick material on there. Again, I guess in conclusion, again, I just want to say that, I think the staff touched on this, the Roxburg Court extension was always part of the plan going all the way back to 2000. We've just made sure we incorporated that and kept that in our plans on here and again, we feel that we've actually made some improvements to the plan as far as how we relate to the neighborhood. With that, we're representatives of Gross are here and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? If there are none, then I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone's wishing to speak for or against this amendment to a planned unit development, please step forward to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Last chance. All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time and we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance amending 18 acres of the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Swan Home Drive, consisting of parcel L of the Victory Station, PUD, as indicated on the attached map.
Mayor?
Yes, Young.
The Planning Commission was sympathetic to the residents of subdivision behind them, Scottish Glen, and we deferred action on this to study the matter more. And the city brought its department heads in and proved to us that this connection is important and would provide service and better service with the rolling stock of the, of the city versus, and the fire and the police. So we were sympathetic and we studied it and we came to the conclusion that the road should be put through there. And with all that, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I'll take this motion.
All right, there's a motion and second. I understand that too. I think all of us would wish sometimes that we didn't have any car traffic on the street in front of our house, but most times for service delivery, it's required, it's the best place to be. So I certainly appreciate the Planning Commission's taking the time and the effort to be sensitive and to try to get some explanation throughout the community there because I think this road connection is important. So with that, we have a motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director to approve a contract with Weiser Company for Design Services for the Cherry Lane Extension Project Phase Three between Sulphur Springs Road and Northwest Broad Street. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. Do have this one item for you this evening, and that is a contract between the City of Murfreesboro and Weiser Company for the Design Services of Cherry Lane Extension Phase Three, and that is a section between Sulphur Springs Road and Northwest Broad Street. I have provided you a map in your council package so that you can see how the three phases fit together to provide an overall network connection which ultimately provides a connection between Memorial Boulevard and Broad Street, including an interchange at State Route 840. As a little description, Phase One of this project has already been constructed in 2006, and that is the section of Cherry Lane between Corcontigius to the Siegel Park. And that was about a $2 million project. And Phase Two is a project that's currently under design and that is from where it left off at the Siegel Park or the western boundary of that park to Sulphur Springs Road, and that's currently programmed and estimated in our adopted CIP at about $10.1 million. Phase Three, which is the subject of this presentation tonight, is a section of Cherry Lane from Sulphur Springs Road to Northwest Broad Street, and this includes an interchange at State Route 840. It's programmed in the current CIP and its estimated cost is $29.7 million. The overall project cost for the entirety of the facility from Memorial Boulevard to Northwest Broad Street is about $41.8 million, and that's about five miles of road. The current phase that we're talking about tonight is the most expensive phase by far, and, and that is primarily due to a couple of things. And number one, that's a project that's being funded partly with federal funds under federal guidelines. And number two, and probably more important, is the fact that that is the most expensive section from the aspect of including an interchange in the project, which is a lot of structures cost, and also another structure being a bridge over Stones River. So that will be the most difficult part of the project and certainly the most expensive. But the overall project is a four and five lane facility meant to help relieve some of the existing congestion that we all know we experience on parts of Northwest Broad Street as well as Thompson Lane. It's also intended for a long service life to provide additional future capacity for future development in the whole northern part of the city. Phase One and Two are locally funded portions, and Phase Three is intended to include federal and local funds to facilitate this construction. And this contract between TDOT and the city for the construction, as it says in your council agenda, is February 13th. That's an error. That's actually when, as a matter of the record, that's when the contract was fully executed between the city and TDOT. The City Council actually approved that in January 12th of 2012. So we've been moving forward since that timeframe. The physical impact is listed in your agenda with the design totaling approximately $2.2 million, the right-of-way estimated $3.4 million, and discussed. The construction is about $24.1 million, which gets you up to the $29.7 million that we were talking about for this particular phase. If you notice above in those figures, the original design budget is budgeted in the current CIP in the total amount of $2,175. The contract price being recommended this evening between the city and Weiser Company is $2,469,223, leaving unbudgeted deficit of $294,223. The city will ultimately be responsible for 20% of this deficit and we will be moving some of the program right-of-way phase back into this to cover a little bit of the shortfall. And some of the cost above and beyond our estimate was due to some meetings that we had with FHWA where as they changed the scope of the project a little bit to extend that up to Sulphur Springs Road. The request for proposals we put out actually left that a little short of that, but the Federal Highway Administration made us go further based on what they call a logical termini, or basically making sure it tied back into existing roadway network. The project is something that's been contemplated for a long time and planned. The project's contained in our Metropolitan Planning Organization's 2035 Regional Transportation Plan, the MPO 2011 through 2015 Transportation Improvement Program, which is basically the regional capital budget, and we have to do this since there are federal funds involved. And of course, the City of Murfreesboro's 2025 Major Thoroughfare Plan, which was adopted in May of 2003, and the City of Murfreesboro's current 2012 through 2016 CIP. And... And subject to the city's review and evaluation of the proposals we received, and we had to evaluate these in accordance with the federal guidelines, we had selected Wiser Company as the preferred firm to conduct this based on their qualifications. And I would recommend approval of a contract that you have before you between the city and Wiser Company in the amount of $2,469,222.89, which covers all the environmental and the design services and all the way through the bidding phase associated with the extension of Phase Three of this project. And be happy to answer any questions, if you may have.
The right-of-way was $3.4 million, and the engineering was near $2.5. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the project itself is budgeted at a little over $24 million.
For the construction phase, yes, sir.
That's Phase Three only.
It's Phase Three only. And as I said, that is a lot higher, as you noticed probably, than the other phases. Probably half of that is associated with construction of the structures that are not present in the preceding two phases.
And we own one quadrant of the interchange. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That would be on the western side of 840.
Kind of a half. It's not a quadrant, but it's...
Yes.
And then, so part of that right-of-way acquisition would be to buy that other side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I, those are the questions I have. Mr. Deion.
Mr. Richardson, if all goes according to plan and the state funds what it does and we do what we do and the feds put in a little money, when could you expect this link and the interchange to be completed?
Well, one of our next steps is to sit down in a pre-design meeting and go through that based on where we are today and based on, I think, the experience we've had with many other federal projects. We're talking basically between five and 10 years, given this point in time. We'll try to narrow that down in a more defined schedule, and certainly will be easier to better define once we get through the environmental phase and get those documents approved.
2025.
Five to 10.
2025.
Judge said, wasn't it?
2025. You and I'll be assisted living.
One less vehicle on the road.
Two less.
Rock and a shoe.
All right. We've got Mr. Richardson where we want him here. Let's talk to him about Section Three. What other questions does the council have regarding this recommendation?
Dana, I think the most important thing is we get it built as quickly as possible because this is obviously going to take pressure off of Memorial. It'll take pressure off Broad Street. It'll take pressure off Thompson Lane, and the sooner the better. So I know roads don't come quickly, but you've put a ton of work into this already, and I'm sure there's much more to be done, but I appreciate what you've done so far and wish you luck with the rest of it.
Thank you.
Dana, is there any thought, or I know there's, of widening the Lebanon Pike highway from Cherry Lane to Thompson Lane because you're going to have a five lane dumping into a two lane?
There is. In fact, if you look at our Major Thoroughfare Plan, it is one of the projects to take it where it left off at the VA, all the way out to Jefferson Pike. And in fact, you notice the bridge over Stones River that the state built is wide enough to ultimately accommodate that. Unfortunately, that's not a project that's in the current radar of the state of Tennessee, but that's something certainly we'd like to push because we openly know that that's an important, to frame in the five lane sections that we have when we conclude the Cherry Lane Extension Project. Love to see that done.
Other questions or comments?
If not, Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation.
Second. Mr. Gilly, thank you. Mr. Smotherman, a motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Deion.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you.
One of the reasons the city has debt is to build roads, and we certainly have built a number of them with some federal help and some state help and some county help. But it goes a long way to explain where we are when we fund projects to let bond issues or debt to pay for it. And of course, we pay them off in 15 years, but we get to use them for a long, long time. So that's a plus. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer to approve a contract with Huddleston Steel Engineering Incorporated for consulting services to design four emergency communications tower sites. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the city council. I do have for you one item tonight. The 2012-16 capital improvement plan includes $2,850,000 for the construction of four communication towers over the next five years. These included locations at the school, near the school complex at Blackman, the Coleman Farm, the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and Marshall Knob. After further evaluation, the MHA site was considered too small and crowded to locate the necessary equipment, so it was determined that tower should be constructed at Fire Station Number Four on Jones Boulevard. I provided a site location map for each proposed site in your package. Also, right before the meeting, I provided a corrected map of at the Blackman School site, I got on the wrong side of the road. So that's the one I provided right before the meeting is correct. The communication towers will expand the coverage of our emergency service providers as the city continues to grow, and they will also enhance coverage within the existing city limits. The proposed tower sites will include a tower equipped to work within our current two-way radio system and the new proposed 700 megahertz system, along with a building pad and an emergency generator in case of power outages. I've included a list of what's included with our consultant services and also a copy of Huddleston Steel's agreement has been included for your review. The budget amount for the design services and our latest CIP for the four tower sites is $175,000 over the next, over the next five years. Huddleston Steel has provided the city a proposal to complete the four tower sites for not to exceed amount of $175,000, although one of the sites is not funded. Three of the sites are actually funded with the 2012 loan, and the fourth site is not funded until 2016. Staff believes that sufficient savings have been realized in previous communication purchases by the police department so that all four site plans can be completed at this time. Staff recommends award of the contract for the consulting services for the four tower sites to Huddleston Steel, subject to review and approval of agreement by the city attorney. I'd like to mention that Chief Christman, Lieutenant Sanders-Watson, and Bill Terry are all here if you happen to have any questions on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any questions regarding this recommendation? All the sites are owned by the city. Fire Station Coleman.
Yes.
Blackman and...
Marshall Knob.
Marshall Knob is part of Barfield Park.
Yes.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
All right, they're all owned by the city.
Yes, sir.
What size will these towers be?
300 feet. They'll have a base of about 60 feet square. They will be built out with all of the UHF, VHF infrastructure that we need to run the systems now, and then will expand to 700, 800 megahertz as we move into that technology. And I would say that there is study of one eastern site because if you think about where we're setting, Marshall Knob obviously would give us south, Blaze Drive would give us west, Coleman will give us north, the Jones Street or the Station Four Fire Hall will give us penetration for the inner part of the city and buildings. The only thing then that's left would be the easternmost part of the city, and there's been some early discussion of a site that CUD owns and may be willing to share some footprint with us for a tower site later out there. And I mention all that just to say that if all of those are ultimately built, the first four would be tremendous, but if we were able to close that loop to the east side of the city, I dare say your two-way radio needs for emergency communications will be in very, very good condition for the foreseeable future. Probably well past when that road extension will be built.
Okay. Now, that won't, I won't get, my radio is not going to be on that tower, so.
And I appreciate all the work, appreciate all the work Mr. Griffith and his staff have done. They've been tremendous.
Good. Other questions regarding this recommendation?
Chief, I know this is just a continuation of the radios and stuff that we've recently purchased and stuff, and in conversation I've had with police officers and firefighters as well, they bragged about how much they liked the new radios. And I think this will be the closing link to make it a complete system. And like you say, this is looking so far out into the future that we've really, I think, the council as well as you guys have done a really good job of planning out and looking out for the community in the future. So I thank you for what you've done on this project as well.
Well, I appreciate that very much. The portable radios that you speak of, they are, they're the best technology that's in the public safety market. The towers will bring the coverage, then the next piece will be the infrastructure that goes behind those towers, and that's, that's a year or so out yet. When it's finished, it will be state of the art. It'll be as good as there is anywhere.
Thank you, then. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second to accept this recommendation of the city engineer. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Deion.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you.
And thanks for being here, all of our city staff that's here with us tonight.
I apologize. I did, Chief Honeycutt is here also representing the fire department, the infamous Chief Honeycutt. Probably should have let him do this presentation.
I hope it will be necessary.
Been shorter.
Yes, you have something else, Mr. Griffith. I saw you holding on tight to the night.
I did want to, with the mayor's permission, did want to take this time to give an update on the Gateway Lake. We completed repairs on the week of March 17th of the Gateway Lake there in the Gateway Island area. We did that with the annual concrete and stormwater contractor for a total of $377,000. If you remember, we had budgeted originally $350,000 for the project with a contingency that, obviously, working underground and working with the subsurface conditions that we were, that that could raise somewhat, and unfortunately, it did. We do feel like that the repairs that we made were very successful, driving loaded dump trucks over the areas that previously used to have exposed rock and voids and really the bulk of our concern. After we filled the lake this last time, we did notice that the water was still leaking somewhat.
This was previous to this most recent?
Well, actually, with the most recent, the most recent dropout's what I'm actually speaking about. We turned the water off, kind of to see where it stabilized at, see if we had any other problems. Very glad to say that none of the repaired areas were leaking. We did notice that it was leaking around the recirculation pipe, which actually the water from the lower lake recirculates back up to the upper lake and causes the waterfalls and all that. And actually, on further investigation, noticed that the recirculation pipe itself was leaking and may have very well caused the void that was causing the entire lake to leak. We made that repair today, or finished that repair today. We estimate that was about another $6,700 on top of what we've already done, relatively small compared to the entire project. But we're hopeful. We're going to turn the water back on Saturday and fill the lake back up, and we think we're going to be, may have another small area like we've identified here, but we're hopeful that we'll be successful with the latest repairs.
So all the clay or the dirt that you put back to the bottom of the pond, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's in place already?
Yes, the two-foot clay cap.
Do you still have a few rock outcroppings that are...
It was a few that, actually left a couple out there on purpose. The geese evidently like to stand on them out in the middle there, so we left a couple out for that. But repairs were made all around those so we could fix any voids. And this one may very well have actually, the latest one may have very well been utility-related because we did find a leak in the recirculation area. We are, we do have plans to work with water and sewer. Matter of fact, have it scheduled for tomorrow at, tomorrow morning to video that line to make sure that we don't have any more leaks in the recirculation line.
All right, Mr. Griffith's here. It'd be a good time if you've had phone calls like I have regarding the lake and the amount of money that we've spent on it. I think most of us understand there were a variety of purposes for which that lake was built. Number one was parks and recreation. Two was part of a remediation for the landfill site that was unpermitted that we had, and the third being the use of reuse water to fill it up, which gave us a place to put more reuse water than where we have it stored now and where we send it out. There may be other uses, but certainly to make it an attractive amenity with the various uses that we have. Any other questions for Mr. Griffith regarding this update? I don't think there's anything here to vote on, but certainly the council members may have questions that they've received from the public. If not, thank you for that update.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I appreciate you being here, working consistently and persistently on that. I know it's probably something you didn't think you'd have to do when you took that job, but you have done very well. Thank you. Beer permits, Ms. Wright.
Yes, Mayor, we have two tonight. We have a special event permit for the chamber for retirement reception on April the 30th, and we have a business change for our current location at 1824 O'Fort Parkway, and that one is still lacking the building codes inspections. So when those are complete and approved, we would like to issue that permit with your permission.
All right, I noticed that Chamber is a retirement for Mona Herring, who's been our convention and visitor bureau vice president, and certainly well deserved. And I would encourage the public to come out for that one, which is for until 6:30 PM at the Chamber of Commerce on April the 30th. Anything, any questions regarding these beer permits from the council members? They meet our requirements? Then is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Deion.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding the statements as they are presented? And if not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Deion.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding the statements as they are presented? And if not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Deion.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Any other business for council? Any announcements from council members?
Just a reminder, coming over here...
We've in the past scheduled three days meetings, so keep that in mind, and we'll give you a calendar so we can maybe set some dates. And then Ms. McKinnon, you have something?
I do, Mayor. Ask the council's approval of the third year for our coverage, for liability insurance, for our rover system. It is a slight increase from the current year, but we believe it is appropriate. It's covered in the budget. It receives federal funding in the transportation budget for that line item, and we ask your approval of the third year and to pay that bill.
All right. Any questions for this renewal, this third-year renewal for insurance for rover? Is there a motion to accept?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Deion.
Second.
Second. Mr. Gilly, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Deion?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Any other business for council? Any announcements from council members?
Just prior to coming over here, went to the Uncle Dave Makin Planning Commission meeting, a board meeting, and so if you don't have anything on your calendar for July the 12th, 13th, and 14th, be thinking ahead for Uncle Dave Makin Days if you'd like to volunteer and participate. It's a wonderful event that we have in our community. It brings lots of people and lots of revenue into the community, and it's a good thing. So go ahead and mark it on your calendar.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Anything else? If not, you're adjourned.